Hello and welcome to Spotlight on New London. I'm Akil Peck, City Councilor for New London. And today, we are joined with the one, the only Director of the Rec Department, Josh Posey.
Hello, how we doing? Thank you, Councilor. And I am always, it's always a pleasure to be on the same show with you, of course. I'm excited to highlight all the amazing things that are happening in New London and this summer and beyond.
Yeah, let's recap. For those families who may not know, the mission, what is the mission of the New London Rec Department?
So it's pretty simple. I'll break it down in a few phrases here, but our mission in a nutshell is building community, offering inclusion, accessibility, and providing a safe and enriching spaces for all ages, especially the youth. So of course, my seniors are also included in that as well.
And looking back at some of the years, what are some of the accomplishments that you would highlight to credit towards the great work that you're doing with the New London Rec Department?
Well, I know last time we were here, we talked a lot about just the overall of what we've been doing. And I always talk about how we're nationally accredited. And I'm always going to continue to mention that because that's a really tough thing for the staff to go through. It takes a lot of work. But we are the only one in Connecticut to be a nationally accredited rec department. So I'm always proud of that and I'm always proud of the staff. They do a great job making sure that we stay accredited. That's an ongoing process and that we do, it's ongoing. I would say even daily, we're always updating our policies and our procedures. All of it has to go into a collective. And then, once we go back to get accredited again, we have to show that we have all that stuff ready to go for that. So I would say the accreditation is huge. I would also say we've expanded some of our sports leagues. Where basketball, you know, still had about 100 kids in our youth program. And we're also going to be taking on soccer this fall. So we'll be doing, that's a special announcement, but we are doing rec soccer this fall. So we'll be looking for some more sponsorships and more support from everyone in the community. But New London Soccer will still be running their programs, but we're going to be assisting with the youth and rec side of those. So so excited for that in the fall. Definitely planning on signing my kids up. So hopefully, everyone in the community will also do the same.
Yeah, now that's interesting. Will you also be utilizing a new field that's going to be open at Fulton Park?
So yes, yeah. So I'm hoping that that gets done as soon as possible. But a part of that grant that we applied for is going to put in a hub for that. So it'd be soccer that would be included there. But for now, we're probably going to use Cawkins Park for now. Just because that's the simplest way to start. But once that project's done, absolutely, we plan on using those soccer goals that we put in place down there at Fulton.
Alright, because I'm excited about it. I know the landing is all set. A lot of work has been done in that area. So I'm excited to see what comes out of this. And again, I think it's just a complement of what we already have. As far as the soccer, I know soccer is growing in popularity. So the more help that you can give to give these youth, I guess, more practice with soccer and kind of like a beginner's stage with your department and kind of move up through the level, I think is great. So I commend you on thinking ahead and forward-thinking and, you know, looking for ways to complement other programs that we currently have to kind of give them some help and assistance.
Yeah, I mean, I really appreciate that. And it's a lot of work to find sponsorships and find the staffing and find the coaches. And so if there's any coaches out there who love soccer and have a passion for soccer, you know, let us know. We're still down at the Stanton Building on 111 Union Street, but soon we'll be moving to One Recreation Way at the New Community Center. So yeah, that's definitely a great accomplishment. We're also really proud of our partnerships. I always talk a little bit about New England Science and Sailing, how they've come in and helped us with our mobile classroom that we're providing for summer camp this year. And those community events that we did. I know last time we came on, I talked about the 5K Brew Run. We had a huge showing for that. I don't have the exact number. I know it was in the hundreds, though, of folks who participated in that run. And we had pizza brew, we had all sorts of things. So it was a really wonderful program. And we're looking forward to doing that again next year. So we'll come back and make sure to let the folks know at home how they could sign up for that and run another 5K with us.
And it was great that a local brewery, Tox Brewing, who's now moving into the great new space on Bank Street.
Delicious pizza.
It's good that they have joined in with this. And, you know, they're just a great partnership with the city. And I just love what they're doing and just happy for them. So yeah, that was a great, that was a great run. You know, I was glad that I was able to stop by and see what was going on over there. So, you know, it looks successful.
And it really was. They were the perfect partnership because they had such a huge space. I don't know if you've been in there, but, you know, they had pizza. They actually even extended the outside for like a little deck. So when folks were done with their race, they were able to go outside in the back, have a slice of pizza, have a drink, have coffee, you name it. They had a lot to offer. And then even had a little stage. You know, we had a staging area where we did our awards. The owner was there to actually run in the event, one of the owners. And so it was just, it was really a lot of fun. I'm hoping that we can continue that and get those sponsorships back again.
Now, I understand you also help and oversee with Youth Affairs. Now, if you can just tap on a little bit about, you know, what your involvement is with Youth Affairs? And, you know, how can you tell the viewers a little bit about Youth Affairs? Because that's just another area of, within the Rec Department that people don't know, that has just a lot of resources and just, everyone there just does a great job, you know?
They do. I really appreciate you bringing that up because they do so much work for the community. One of the biggest supports that my Youth Affairs team does is they support our disconnected youth. You know, in terms of, you know, we have this huge work program that we are involved in. It's called Youth Employment, Connecticut Youth Employment. They just had their orientation just last week. And I was able to speak to the kids a little bit along with Mayor Pasrow. And it was a really, really great event because we were able to walk in and see, you know, 100 kids from all over the walks of life who were sitting together at round tables, having lunch, and preparing themselves for the work program that they're about to take part in. Some of them work at Mystic Seaport, as you probably know. And they work at various spots throughout the city and all over southeastern Connecticut to get involved in that. That's a huge program. And, you know, a lot of things that I think people don't realize is Youth Affairs, we have to write a lot of grants, right, to have the staffing, to have the support that we need. So we're writing almost a million dollars in grants a year, believe it or not. Yes, almost a million dollars in grants. And Ellen is one of the ones who won't take credit, but she is fantastic. She's a great grant writer. She's been with the city for a very long time. And she's been really bringing in a lot of those grants for us. And so we appreciate her as well for her support and leadership in developing those programs. But yeah, so that Youth Employment Program is huge. And the other thing I always try to bring up is the classroom. So Tina Salcedo's Classroom and Rhiannon Rubino, they run a zero-to-five program. And I mentioned last time we're here that we would be moving into the Community Center. She's got her own classroom there. Just left there just now. And the air conditioning was wonderful, by the way, in the building. And so when we got there, her classroom's huge. She's got all of her toys ready to go for her classroom. She usually has the families come in and meet with her. And she could teach them all sorts of things, you know? If you don't know how to change a diaper, if you don't know how to, you know, cook healthy meals or just as simple as finding a place for your kid to be evaluated. If you feel like there's a need for him to have special services at school, they could reference you for that. Because she works very closely with the public schools as well. They all know Tina and she helps with them. And then, you know, one of the bigger items is the diaper bank and book bank. So we have diaper bank and a book bank. The diaper bank's huge. It's not just diapers, though. I always say that and Tina will tell you, it's not just diapers. You know, we're connecting folks with other resources as well, where they can go to find food, if whether it's through TVCCA or any other partners that we've worked with. But we do provide diapers for folks because folks are really having a hard time getting access to those types of items right now. And even now, but even in the past, they've had issues finding diapers. So we have some grant money that we have to, that they send in those diapers once a month. And we issue those out to families. They have to sign up and call first, of course. But if anyone out there is in need of anything like that, they can always give us a call. And we can help support you in any way, even if it's beyond diapers as well.
Well, I think that's huge because this really is what a community should be about. Is about helping everybody and wrapping their arms around, you know, issues that are, that people in the community face. So that's huge that this, that we have all this. And I don't think a lot of people know this. And this is why it's very important that, why we're here today. This is our second taping, The Spotlight on New London. And I think it's very useful because it gets the word out there. And people can share it on social media, all the information that you have. Because I think a lot of times, there's so many different ways to get information that people, you know, find it hard to actually find the information that they need or that they're looking for. So I think that's why this show is just a great way to spotlight New London and what we do. And New London really, really is a true community. I'm born and raised in New London. And I can't speak enough about how much I love my city, our city. Because it just shows from Youth Affairs to the Rec Department, I can go, list can go on and on and on. There's so many different nonprofits. I know that Mr. Rubin at the Bodega, they have a food pantry where they give out food. At the old VFW, there's a food pantry there. So there's so many different ways that if people, you know, are facing hardship, can find either a diaper bank for diapers, diaper wipes, food, formula, what have you. Because truly, that is what a community should do is help everyone out and give a hand to everyone.
Absolutely, yeah. And I totally agree. And the other, the other part of that is, one, we did move that diaper bank. It's moving from where it is now over to the Community Center. So that'll be happening soon. It hasn't happened yet, so I just didn't want to confuse folks. It's still over at our normal building, at Stanton Building. And I know that's a huge resource for them. So we haven't moved it yet, but it will be moving soon. And then that book bank that we have, it's just free books. It's like a library for folks to come in and grab children's books and things like that. If families want to take a book and swap a book out, they can. But that book bank is at the Community Center now. So and as well as Tina's Bertha Five Classroom. So you can definitely go there and visit anytime.
And the big buzz around New London is the New Community Recreation Center. Now, I was there on, last month.
Yeah, the 25th, yeah.
The 25th, when we had the, like, there was this huge ceremony, Mashin Tucket, Eastern Pequot, and a lot of other native, you know, reservations that came. A lot of native, you know, leaders came and blessed the land. And it was just a great, I'm still just overwhelmed by all the great work that Director Reyes put together. There's some photos of the ribbon cutting, State Rep Anthony Noen, State Rep, Dan was there. It was hot.
Hot day, it was beautiful, though.
State Senator Marks was there. There's just so many different people that came out. And it was just a great, great day. Yes, it was very hot. Once we did the ribbon cutting, we all went inside. And I was there from 12 to 9 because then it was actually a blessing of the center afterwards.
Yeah, like the church groups came.
Yes, that was, that was beautiful. It was, it was very impactful. It was very good. I mean, the photos, it looks like it's not real. It looks like a rendering. Because the building is just beautiful.
It's true.
And we got a lot of things coming up. So I want you to touch on all the great things that are happening, all the key dates that people need to look out for. Because we have some exciting stuff going on.
Yeah, well, I'll start with Recreation. We, our 10 to 14 program, a big dream of mine was to have that 10 to 14 program back. It went away, I think, during COVID and now it's back. And we've opened our doors to that 10 to 14 program. So they started last Monday. And it's pretty awesome when you see the kids, when you walk in and you see all the kids running around the gym, playing basketball or playing pickleball or having their lunch in the community room. So we already have a little bit of a soft opening going on now. Tomorrow, though, July 8th, is when they're opening their doors officially for the soft opening. So folks, tomorrow, you'll be able to go in. And if you have a membership or don't have a membership yet, you can sign up, still online. But they'll have access to the building tomorrow. And I just was, just left there just now and the place is immaculate.
So that's July 8th?
Yep.
For the viewers, because I know this will be shown at different times, so that's July 8th. And then July 12th?
Yes, sir.
Something exciting happening.
Yeah, July 12th is the ribbon cutting. I'm going to get more details on when, but I believe it's in the morning that the Community Center group will be there and I'll be there as well. And we'll be doing an additional ribbon cutting on Saturday, July 12th.
And I believe that's on the same day as celebrating New London.
Sure is.
So there's going to be a lot of stuff happening this Saturday. And it looks like, I checked the weather before I got here, the weather looks like it's going to cooperate. So just another day to just be by the water and just explore New London, as we say. And, you know, I just can't think enough, you, Director Reyes, the mayor, Mayor Mike Pasrow, and all those who had a hand in just putting together these community engagements to really highlight and showcase in London what we have to offer. Because we have a lot to offer.
Yeah, it's, it's been a long time coming and.
And I know you've been running around like crazy.
A little bit, a little bit. But I really, really, it's been such a team effort. I feel like my department and Felix's development groups and the mayor and City Council. And I don't think a lot of people realize that there's so many moving parts to making this happen. And it is like a dream. And when I was standing there at that ceremony on the 25th and I got a chance to speak to the crowd and, you know, I said it felt a little bit like finding parking downtown New London. I couldn't believe it. Wow, I found it on the first try, right? And it was a dream. Like, I couldn't believe that I'm actually here and looking at this beautiful building. I mean, there's an indoor pool, there's volleyball nets, there's full-court basketball courts that you can play, six pickleball courts, which I think is amazing. So a lot of, a lot of.
I want to try pickleball. I've never tried it.
Let's bring it.
So I have to talk to you about that because I've been dreaming and waiting to try pickleball. So at some point, that I will be there to actually, you know, get on the court and try.
Well, we will put out a special invite for staff and maybe some of the City Council that come down and we'll show you how to play. A couple of my staff are really good players who love to play pickleball. And it's really starting to grow more and more. It's already huge everywhere. But now that we are going to have an indoor place to play during the winter time, I mean, it's going to be even, even greater. So looking forward to that. You know, and not to mention that we do have some community rooms. One community room, actually, that we'll be using, utilizing very, very much in that huge kitchen. I don't know if you got a chance to walk by the kitchen, but it's a full kitchen. And we've got, we've got a cooking camp that's going to start this summer. And we've never, I don't, we've tried it at various spots before, but we're really, really looking forward to having this in its own space. So if you get a chance to check it out, I believe there's a couple of spots left. It's filled up so quick. When we put out a cooking camp online, folks really, it really resonated with folks. They really wanted to sign their kids up. So it's filling up quick. So if anyone is interested in cooking camp, you can go on our website and you can sign up or email me or reach out to me as well. And we can kind of get you set up with that. But really looking forward to that camp.
I'm glad you're bringing that back. Because I don't know if I told you this or shared this with you, but that's how I got my first love with cooking in the city. I believe it was Nathan Hill. They had a cooking class after school and my parents enrolled me in it. And that's how I just, I just got involved with cooking and the love of cooking. So these young people, they just don't know just what could come out of it. If they just explore and just come out of their comfort zone and just kind of pick up something that they wouldn't ordinarily pick up as far as like cooking or maybe it could be a knitting class or something, you know, out of the, out of their norm.
What were you making, grilled cheeses or?
No, actually, actually, I still remember it. We made pretzels and personal pan pizzas.
Come on, that's awesome.
Yeah, it was cool. It was, and from scratch, from the beginning to the end. There was no, you know, like dough or anything like that, pre-made dough.
Oh wow, so you do measurements and everything?
Yes, they did.
What a good learning tool.
They did. They had us, they had us doing that all from start to finish. And this was way back decades, decades ago at Nathan Hill, decades ago.
Not too long, though, right?
No, it was a long time ago. I'm surprised I still remember it, but yeah. So, once you're in the new Community Rec Center, what are some of the programs that the Rec Department will be putting on? Is it some free programs? I know there's a lot, we probably can't cover it all. But just so that the viewers know how they can access your programs that's in the new Community Recreation.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So our, we're piecing together our program guide. Last time we were here, we were, our summer guide had just finished. And we're gathering all our information. And I'd say by the next two weeks, we should have all our information set to go out to print for our fall guide. And our fall guide will be ready for you guys, I believe, in August to highlight all the programs that we will still be running. We're still going to be running programs throughout the city. So all of the schools and outdoor facilities that we're currently using will still be using that. That won't be going away. So luckily, we'll still be, we'll still have those. But in addition to that, we'll have the Community Center as well, which is awesome. We plan on doing swim lessons, definitely at the community room, Community Center. And, you know, Tom Bedeswo and his crew are gearing up to launch a few new lessons in addition to what we're already running. We still run lessons over at Ocean Beach. So we're looking forward to still have an Ocean Beach and then also now in the fall, we'll have the Community Center. And then we really want to kick off some after-school programs. That's still in the works. But right now, we think it's important that the kids in the community really learn how to swim. And I think it goes without saying, I think a lot of kids haven't had access to swim lessons. And, you know, we want to change that. It's a very small number of kids who know how to swim in New London. And so I really think it's our mission to make sure, since we're so close to the water, that they have access to. So, you know, now that we have this Community Center opening up, there really won't be any excuse now. You know, so with after-school programming, we want to implement with some partners, swim lessons as well. So kids could come after school and do some swim lessons with us as well.
Yeah, because I think it's important. I don't know if people know this, but for decades, the Ocean Beach has always, you know, been open to swim lessons. I remember taking it myself. My kids went through that whole, through the Rec Department for swimming lessons. And you're right, it is very important, you know, being a coastal city to have the ability to offer that to all the residents. You know, even adults, if they don't know how to swim. I don't think that's an area that we really talk about. We talk a lot about the kids, but, you know, there are some adults who still don't know how to swim. And it's dangerous. I mean, being so close by the Thames River, you know, you just never know what could happen. So it's important that we all know how to swim. So you may never know if you may have to save your own life or someone else's life, you know?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, and you're absolutely hit a good point. Because a lot of parents that I've spoken to in the city, there's a, there's a, there's a big fear around the water. And it's not something that I'm used to because my dad was in the Coast Guard. So we always had access to water or pools or on base. But there's a fear around it. And so we will offer swim lessons to adults, we still do. So if there are adults out there who are looking for swim lessons, please, you know, we don't have to wait for the Community Center open. You can call us and we can help you. You know, the team is really, really good at what they do. So it's really not just for the youth. Any ages that are looking for any sort of swim lessons, please let us know. We'd be happy to help.
Yeah, and so that's great. You know, I'm glad, and again, you know, that we're talking about it and we're highlighting some of the great things that New London has to offer. Because again, I think that people just don't know. They just don't know that all of this is available to them. And so, you know, I'm just happy and I'm overwhelmed with, with joy of the fact that, you know, you are doing just a great job and I commend you on what you're doing. And I really mean that. The rest of the councilors, we feel, you know, the same, that you're doing a great job. And, you know, that's why we've supported you thus far. To continue rolling out great programs for our youth and our adults and, you know, new members that are coming into the city. I think a lot of times, the Rec Department is a great way to kind of learn, you know, your way around the city and learn and meet new people and kind of meet new parents and kind of, you know, break the ice and get welcomed and get settled into your new environment. So that's, I don't think people think of it. But you are our welcoming committee. If, that's the way I think of it, in a way.
You're right.
Because, you know, where do people go when they first move into a new city? I would think would be the Rec Department because that's a great way for people to meet other parents. Their kids can meet other kids and kind of break the ice a little bit before they enter into the classroom. You know, so I don't know if you ever thought of it that way, but yeah.
That's why I got into what I do, my line of work in Recreation. You know, I went to school for Recreation. And a lot of it was because we grew up in Louisiana, New Orleans, and we moved to Connecticut when we were younger, right? And just like you just said, the Rec Department was how we connected with our community. Doing sports and showing up to dances and things that used to go on during Rec was how we met our inner circle. So I wanted to be able to do that as an adult. And so it's so exciting to be able to provide this stuff for the city of New London because it's important. It really is. It's how we bring, bring the community together. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I understand you have something, something exciting coming up this month in July.
Yeah, yes, thank you, I do. It is a free positive coaching clinic.
Okay.
And, yeah, so it's, it's really exciting. It's coming up in July, July 24th. And it's going to be from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. This will be the first kind of event that I'll be running at the New Community Center. It's a free positive coaching clinic and at the Community Center. This program is supported by Disney Worldwide Inc. And it's open to anyone that's working with youth. So coaches, mentors, and even volunteers. It doesn't, you don't necessarily have to be in sports. It could be mentors. It could be anyone that wants to learn a little bit more about, you know, how to be more positive with our youth. So yes, I'm very excited about this program because I'm working with Rico Chow. And they are some folks that are going to be providing dinner for us. I just met with them today. And we're coming up with a nice menu because not only is this a free clinic, but we're also going to have a free dinner. So we're going to have appetizers and food to try to reel you in. So all you got to do is go online and sign up. It's free, again, very free. I know it could take, I think, up to 50 folks. Folks have already started signing up and registering. But if you're interested, please either give me a call or go to our website and you can sign up. And again, it's free. You just have to make a username and password on our myrec.com and you can, you can sign up.
Now, I'm thinking of stopping by because I like to support. So hopefully, I don't have to sign up, so you can count me in.
Any City Council or official are always welcome, please, by all means.
I will spread the word and, because I think it's important for people to see that we're supporting what you're doing there at the Rec Department and especially see this program that you're starting, that you're trying to start or that you're starting. Because I believe it's important. And I want to thank you for being, you know, proactive in this. Because there are a lot of nonprofit organizations in the city. And I don't think people really understand that. And it's important for you to have the tools, the right tools to keep your program going for long term. Because there are some, you know, nonprofit programs that start and they don't have the training or the expertise or the tools. And it starts and then you get a group of people who are accustomed to the services that they're providing. And they can't sustain themselves because they don't have, they lack the proper training. So that's why this is extremely important for anyone. Like you mentioned, not just coaches or athletics, but anyone that's in a nonprofit that's looking to have programs in the city of New London geared around kids. Because it's important for you to learn from the professionals exactly what you need to do, how you need to start up, you know, and all the ins and outs to have a successful program, to sustain yourselves, to keep yourself going. So I really, I see what you're doing with this program. And thank you very much for doing it. Because we want, we want these programs to last. We, you know, we can't do it all. It takes a community.
Sure does. And, you know, anyone that's looking to build some confidence around working with the youth, this is going to be great for you. Anyone working on your leadership skills with youth, this is great for you. Your communication with the kids is also going to be important. This would be great for you as well. We're going to, like I said, we're going to include a free dinner and some free raffle prizes just for coming. So everyone is welcome, residents and non-residents.
Okay, so it's open to residents and non-residents?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, that's huge.
Yeah, anyone, anyone that's interested. So it is a part of a grant that I applied for and received. So again, a part of that grant, when we wrote it, said we would open it up to some of the other towns as well. So if, you know, if folks from Norwich or Groton or Waterford would like to sign up, please do. We'd welcome you to come to this event. You know, we have a gentleman coming down. He's a coach motivator and he'll come down and speak to us. I think it'll be about an hour and a half. And like I said, we'll have some food and some drink and some dessert. Waiting for everyone to have and it'll be a great time.
And have you had anyone sign up yet or still kind of?
Yeah, we got a few, yeah, we have a few signups, yeah. So and we only, like I said, we only could take up to like 50 spots or so. So I would encourage you to sign up as soon as you can because there's only a couple of weeks left and the spots are going pretty quick.
Well, you know, since we're going to air this, you know, this week, Well, you know, since we're going to air this, um, you know, this week, hopefully people have enough time to figure out their schedules. And, you know, sign up. There's a QR code. They can go on, they can go on the website.
Yeah.
City's website.
Yep. They can go to the New London Recreation, um, to find it, or they can use the flyer that they're looking at right now and scan that QR code. And it should take you right to the registration.
And Rico Chow, uh, is phenomenal restaurant, um, on William Street. So, you know, just a little plug for them because they do some great work there. And they're always engaged in the community and looking for ways to help, you know, and, and.
Great guy, great family man. And, you know, I was looking for a local restaurant, you know, to, to, to have, to come out and help us who have really good food. I, I, you know, I like to eat. So I, um, I met with him and he went through the menu and, um, so we're looking forward to it. And I think it's going to be a good menu. And I think everyone's going to be happy with that. And plus it's a good way to, to check out the community center. So, um, we'll be, it's, it's marketed as community room, but we're also going to use the multipurpose room. Cause I think it's going to be better suited for, you know, as many folks as we're going to have.
So it'll be at the community center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this, again, this will be another way, uh, for some people who haven't had a chance to go in there and get in there. See that, that's why I've been telling people that there's so many different ways that you can gain access to this, uh, wonderful facility. And this is just another way. This is a free event that doesn't cost anyone anything. You just gotta register. Just gotta register. Make sure you register on time. And, um, and you'll be in the building and you'll be able to, uh, to meet a lot of different people. I love it. I, I think, again, I can't speak enough about it. I love the fact that you're forward thinking and, and you're thinking ahead. And, and, because there's just so many nonprofits and there's just so many, you know, people that are trying to do some great things, you know, for the youth. And you just need the, the skills, you know, to kind of make your success, successful. So, uh,
Absolutely.
So yeah, let's talk a little bit about the summer. I know summer's here and it's happening and there's a lot going on, you know, it's, where it's July, it's hard to believe we're already in July. So summer goes quick. Um, so we want to just highlight some great things that are going to be happening this summer with the rec department.
Well, I want to, one, just give a shout out to our summer camp staff.
Okay.
Um, they are out there in the heat, um, entertaining our kids, um, that are signed up for the program. Uh, you know, whether that's swimming at Ocean Beach or swim lessons, um, at the beach as well. Um, you know, we've got a good team who's really put together a good program for the families to, to trust in us to, to, they could drop their kids off. And they're going to have a, a, a good summer, right? It's, it's important that those kids get some enrichment, but as well as some fun. Our program also provides, uh, free breakfast and lunch as well. So, um, that's been a big help for the families involved. So again, shout out to, to, to the rec staff and to the summer camp staff. You guys are doing a great job and, and we're, we're, we're not quite there yet. Camp doesn't end till August 8th, but, um, you know, we're going to have a lot of fun, uh, leading up to that. So some of the things that we've, we've got going on, um, our rec mobile, I, I mentioned, um, has already started. It, it, it stops at various parks throughout the, uh, the city, um, as well as the mobile classroom from New England Science and Sailing. They're also a partner with us and they're joining us in, in, uh, coming out to the parks. They're also going to be at some of our summer camps as a, as a station for some of our programs. And in that mobile classroom, like I said, it's, it's run like a classroom where you could fit up to eight kids with an instructor and they're, they, um, it amazes me how much the, the staff knows about science. I know it's their job, but like even when I walked in the other day at the 25th ceremony and, and questioned them about, hey, what is this, this animal that you're showing me? And she had a whole, oh, the moon comes out and that's when they could reproduce it. That's why you saw that, that day at the beach. And it's just amazing. They kind of, the things that they could share and the things they, they, uh, they know about, um, um, the marine life and about sailing. And, um, so Ness, shout out to you guys because they, they do a wonderful job for us.
Well, Ness is phenomenal. And, you know, I always say this, learning shouldn't stop in the summer. You know, kids should still continually be engaged and also have fun. You know, they're out of the classroom setting. They, they want to have fun during the summer. And that's why it's important that, that we have great partnerships like Ness, um, you know, to help, you know, engage our youth and give them something new. The mobile classroom, I did see it at, at the, um, the dedication at the new community center and it, it looked great. I didn't get a chance to go over there. And I know we have so many different, um, spots throughout the city. I know, um, Bates Woods.
Yep.
You have, you have campers over there, the beach. So I've seen you driving all over the city, bouncing around from, from site to site to site. And that must just be, uh, a lot to handle.
Yeah.
Monday through Friday, stopping out at all these spots.
It's fun, but luckily, uh, like I said, we have a good support team down at the sites. But yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's good for us to get out and support and that, you know, we want to make sure that they see that we, we got their back, right? We're out there at camp in the heat, um, whether it's inspecting playgrounds, you know, Sharon Busquet, uh, is our playground inspector. So she'll be out there, you know, once a month to make sure that those playgrounds are safe for our kids. Um, so yeah.
So those are some of the strong, are those some of the strong, strong partners that you have that are helping your department?
Yeah. Ness, um, you know, uh, basically we work with so many different partnerships, but, um, you know, I always kind of fall back with the schools as well because I know they, we help with them with their before care program. And, uh, we're hoping to, to expand our partnerships with, with, with Ness and with the schools within, and our local businesses as well. Um, so if there's anyone out there that would like to volunteer or become a sponsor, uh, you know, or just want to sign your kid up for a program, you know, you can definitely reach out to me directly. Um, but, you know, basketball season is rolling around the corner and I don't, I hate to admit it, but, you know, like you said, summer goes quick.
It does.
And once August rolls around, I'm looking for new sponsorships for basketball and, um, new coaches. So.
Now, I know, I know we talked a little bit, you just mentioned about, um, you know, people getting involved, like volunteers. But I don't think we've ever talked about this. Is there a way that if there's someone out there that would like to donate monetarily to the, to the rec department? Is that, is that possible?
It sure is. And I appreciate you saying that because I just had someone call me last week. Um, I don't want to mention her name, but thank you. And you know who you are for donating. But yes, you could, we have a section on our website, um, on myrec.com that you, once you go on, like, just like if you're signing up for a program, there's a section on there that says donations. Um, and that, that money does help us with our scholarships. Uh, we, we see quite a few families who need scholarships in the summer. Um, so what we can do is we could really, really reduce that rate, uh, for summer camp, um, for, for families and the staff. And then, you know, if there's other programs out there that we can support, we will. But a lot of that funding goes for summer because a lot of families. Like we, I think last time I checked, we had about 260 kids signed up, um, throughout the summer weeks, uh, for our camp. So, and a lot of those families need support.
Well, I'm, I'm glad we touched on it because I don't think people really think about it. So, you know, if there is anyone out there who's able, you know, um, you know, if your, your kids are older and you still want to contribute some way to the youth, I think, uh, donating to the rec department is a great way. You know, for people to get involved if you can't physically get involved. I think that's one way to get involved is by donating to the rec department. And, and I don't believe that the money will go, go, um, unspent. You know, I believe that there are some kids out there, like you said, that, that, that they might want to sign up for some of the programs, but you know, the money might not be there at, at that appropriate time. And, and you may, you may have money in the coffers to kind of, you know, have scholarships for kids. So.
Absolutely.
So I think it's important. So any viewers that are out there, please, please, if you, if you can, please donate, uh, to the rec department. Go on the website, find out information there. Um, all the kids would, would greatly appreciate it. So thank you. And, uh, so, you know, just to recap, so what are some of the other things that are happening at the rec department on the horizon?
So looking ahead, we, um, obviously we want to make sure this is equitable and there's equity and access for, for all of our programs. I talked about the national accreditation. That's an ongoing thing. That's going to continue to happen. And, and so looking ahead, we're going to continue to do that and meet. Um, we also want to really build deeper connections, um, and have community trust. I think that's important that the community is trusting us with their, with their kids and their families. Um, so, so really developing that community trust and making rec a place where, you know, every resident feels, you know, welcomed and, and supported, I think is really important. So that's kind of what we're looking at ahead right now. And then, uh, moving into, um, August and, and September, our, um, our fall guide will be ready to go. So we do mail those home. Uh, we, we work with the day paper, um, to, to, to get a mailing out. So we try to get those out to as many residents as possible. So, uh, we also can take sponsorships for that. Um, so if you're a local business who wants to get advertised in there, I know we had some, some local dentists, um, who are advertising our, in our guide. And, um, matter of fact, I'm signing up my family to get dentistry there done as well, but, um, looking forward to that. But if you ever wanted to get, be a part of our newsletter, you can, um, there is a fee, but, uh, please reach out. Don't be afraid to ask. We would love to have you in our program guide.
And I also would like to touch on something that I don't think we touched on this show or the last show, but also there are trips. Some great trips that the rec department has in the, in the book. Cause my mom goes on some of them. Some of them are, 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 you know, trips to Maine, Vermont, New York. Uh, I believe they're in, they're in the flyer, a lot of the rec department, the trips that are, you know.
Yeah. So I think a lot of those are through our senior center, um, with Marina.
Yeah, but there are some for families as well. I believe, um, going to like New York to see the Christmas tree in, in December. Um, I remember back as a child, you know, uh, going on some of those trips myself.
Yeah. We haven't done that in a while, but I, that's definitely something that I want to bring back. When I did my first internship in Coventry, Connecticut, which is a long time ago, um, I had learned from them that families really enjoy a nice trip, right? That's organized through rec. Uh, so it is something that I'm interested in, in bringing back to the community. But we, we haven't, we don't have any in the works right now, but it's, it's something that's in, that, that I'm cooking up because I do think it's important, um, for us to do that. So.
Yeah. And, and you talked about the senior center and they have trips. Um, and I understand the rec department is, does work closely with the senior center too. Can you touch on just a little bit? I know that's off topic. Just a little bit about your involvement with the seniors.
Yeah. So we, and I, I want to make sure it's clear that all of our programs in rec are offered to all ages. So any seniors that are, that are interested in programming or they have ideas, you know, by all means, please reach out because we are always looking for new ideas. Or if you're an instructor and want to come in and teach something, I mean, we've got, we've added new programs like belly dancing and, um, body sculptings back. Um, you know, we even added a traditional bachata class, a little dancing. So again, we see, we see people of all ages in those programs. So, um, I do work with, um, Marina and, and Jeannie Milstein, who, who, um, run the, the senior affairs and, um, but yes. So that's basically really it. You know, we get together and make sure that, you know, what they're providing, um, kind of works in unison with ours. Um, but at the new community center, um, Marina and Jeannie will have a small room there. I believe that they'll be able to work with seniors as well. So there's more coming for the seniors. Um, I'm actually really excited about their access to the community center because they're the ones that are probably going to be there with me during the day. Um, and, and we'll be, you know, swimming laps together and taking some classes.
And that's why I brought it up because I'm the liaison for the seniors affairs commission. And, um, you know, the seniors, they're a great group. And, uh, they're very vocal.
Yeah, they are.
And, and, um, you know, so I'm always advocating for our seniors and making sure that they have space in this beautiful, uh, community rec center. So that's good that we touched on a little bit about it for the seniors because, uh, it's important. You know, it's important that, that we have programs and we don't forget about them as well. Um, and it's good that, like you said, once school starts and the kiddos are back to school, um, the seniors will have more time in the morning to, to gain access to the community rec center.
Absolutely. And we want, like I said, we want to make sure that everybody feels supported and welcomed. And, uh, whether you're coming down to the community center for a tour or signing up for one of our programs throughout the city. Um, you know, if, if you, like I mentioned, if you have any ideas or, um, want to volunteer, you know, please give us a call. We, we're always open to, to that. And, um, you know, we appreciate any, any seniors that are, um, that come across our way that are interested in, in signing up for programming.
Well, thank you, Josh, you know, for your leadership, you know, your vision. And, um, you know, it's not easy, you know, to, to put all this together and to get everybody in the same room to communicate with one another and kind of coordinate. Because there are so many moving parts and there's so many different, you know, nonprofits that are doing something kind of what you're doing or similar or thinking about an idea. And you do a great job of getting together all the different community leaders and all the different stakeholders together in one room and kind of bounce ideas off. And you're, and you're welcoming to all. You're, you're like, hey, you know what? Yes, you are the director for the rec department, but you do listen and you do kind of give people the ability to kind of, you know, select or talk about some things that they want. You're not just the guy that's saying, okay, this is what I want. This is what I want. This is what I want. It's a team effort and it shows. It shows in everyone that's, that's in your office. That's pleasant. Every time I stop by there, uh, everyone's happy. So, you know, that speaks highly of your leadership. If, if the whole group is happy, then I mean, something's going on right there. So, um, so I just want to publicly commend you on that. Just keep doing a great job. You know, keep listening to the residents of what they want. And, um, and yeah, so do you have anything else that you, that you want to talk about?
There's always so much to talk about. Uh, but yes, I do want to talk a little bit before we go, uh, about our facilities and our rentals. So we do get a lot of folks who may or may not know that, um, the rec department are the ones who rent the, the public pavilions. Um, so down at like Bates Woods, for example, we have three pavilions down there, down there near the, the animal pound there, control there, um, near the softball field. So we have three pavilions down there. Folks will call up and say, hey, I want to rent one of these pavilions. So you, you're, you could do that and you can get a permit through, through the rec department. So, um, if you're looking to, I don't know, do a birthday party or just want to gather someone with you, with your family and friends. Um, we have several different sites throughout the community that you can reserve the space. Um, there is a, the city resident fee and there is a non-resident fee, uh, businesses, outside businesses, um, local churches. And we've, we, we get calls from everyone. Um, so let us know if you're interested and you, and you would like to reserve some space. Our parks are also, you can reserve as well with, for a fee. Um, and so recently we also had, um, some outside groups who, uh, who want to rent the turf fields down at the high school for football. So we're really trying to, and I, my vision is we will expand that a little bit and open it up a little bit to, to, um, to get some more folks down there to, to do these rentals, um, because we do have the capacity to do it. The easiest way to sign up for a permit is to go to our website, um, and sign up online. And you could pick what park you want, what day and what time, and it'll bounce right over to myself or Sally Brennan, who's been helping me out. Sally, by the way, shout out to you. You've been helping me so much. Um, and then we can approve it and we'll get in touch with you after that.
So your office answers the emails that they submit requesting for various, uh, use of the park. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. So.
And so that's all they have to do is pay their fee and then if the date's and time's available, then they got it.
Exactly.
Okay.
So basically we, what we do is we monitor that and make sure that, you know, uh, public works gets down there to change the garbage cans and try to make sure the place is cleaned up as best as we can, you know, with what we're working with. But, um, we also send out my park ranger, uh, Zach Morales, who helps monitor some of these field usage as well. So he'll go out and put up the sign. And so if you rent it, we'll put up a nice little, little sign that we make to make sure that they know it's reserved for you. Yep. Got your party's name on it. Uh, people will rent Toby May, you know, for their small, they have a small little pavilion there. Uh, we have, um, various baseball programs that are renting our baseball fields. Um, and, uh, but like I said, the, the bigger ones right now are, are pavilion rentals and our riverside park rentals and folks coming down to do that.
Yeah. I was, uh, driving by, um, Harbor, the Harbor Beach over there. And I just noticed that, um, that that's a popular, that's a popular spot.
Absolutely. Green Harbor is.
Green Harbor.
And, and, um, you know, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a hole in the can of worms, but Green Harbor is, is very popular. And, uh, but yes, if you, you can reserve the Green Harbor space, um, that there's I think three picnic tables up there that you can reserve for yourself. But again, I would, um, would book it. If you have over 50 people, you do have to come down and see my rec commission. Um, the rec commission meets, um, the first Wednesday of the month at 6:30 down at the senior center, um, down in New London. And, um, basically what will, you'll do is you'll come in and you'll sign in, 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 um, with Michelle. She's our secretary. She's wonderful. Uh, she leaves out a little sheet of paper. You sign in and then they call you up. And then you just tell them that you'd like to do, uh, whatever, whatever you're interested in doing. And, um, the commission will approve it or not approve it, but most of the time they will approve it as long as it's something that's meets all of our city, uh, guidelines and facility policies. Um, and then from there, you would then come down to the rec department and get a permit. And then, um, the last thing is a lot of folks don't realize it, but if you need, if you're going to have amplified music, you do have to get a noise, write a noise permit. And that's, once you get a permit from us, then you would take that permit down to the police department and they'd issue a, a sound port permit for you. And that's all. But I want to make sure that was clear because I think a lot of folks don't realize that, you know, they have this option. And, and it's cheaper for city residents. It's actually much cheaper for city residents to rent our pavilions and our, and our, um, and our parks.
Yeah. And it's important that people know the, the proper procedures, uh, to rent this various parks. So, you know, people's plans don't get, uh, you know, um, canceled. If somebody else had rented the space and you showed up before they did, setting up, it's a process, you know? So that's why it's important. Again, you know, knowledge is power and it's good that we have this, this spotlight here on New London. So that way we can talk a little bit about some of the permits and some of the programs that people may have. So you can share the information if you're watching this. Um, please share it, you know, on social media. Please tell people about this program. So that way, you know, um, more people are empowered to knowing exactly what's going on. And, um, you know, hopefully we can do this again. Hopefully if we can, you know, as long as we have material to talk about.
Absolutely.
You know, I would like to come back, you know, monthly and, um, keep the spotlight on New London going because it's, it's important. I remember, um, Mr. Major, you know, would come on air and, and talk a lot about, you know, the rec department and he kept it going. He was, you know, always on this cable access and, uh, just kind of sharing a lot.
A great guy. And, um, I do want to say thank you to you as well, Akil, um, president pro temp, if I, if I say that correctly. Uh, you have a big role in the city and, um, you are also very engaging and easy to talk to and, um, very accessible as well. So if folks do have questions about what city council does, I'm sure that they could email you and your email access as well and, and reach out. And your support has been, um, unbelievable. So we really appreciate. So my deep thanks to you, um, the mayor, city council, um, our rec commission. And of course the incredible staff, um, that work for us every day. Um, again, we're not just putting out events. We're building a stronger and safer and more united New London. So thank you.
Thank you all for, uh, tuning in and, uh, we hope to see you again on Spotlight on New London. Thank you.